And bear with me, I'm contacting Glenna by T as well to start on access vision.
Thank you, Chad.
How was everyone's day?
Busy and long.
Very hectic.
I echo the busy and long.
Yeah.
Now in a bourbon.
If we're live. Facebook, just waiting to confirm on access vision.
Okay.
Okay, Glenna says we will get on access.
Great, thanks Chad. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're ready to go Rebecca.
Yes, sir.
All right, this is our third PBB workshop. It is scheduled to end at 7:30. I'm going to hold everyone to that. Rebecca, I'd like to turn it over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, it seems like we did just have this conversation and yet it was in in May. So, you know, we want to follow back up with the Commission. We're excited to have Chris Fabian and Bradley Stecker and Eric Keck with us again from PBB or Resource X, however we want to recognize them. And they're going to just, you know, they've done a really good job in capturing the comments from our last workshop with the Commission and are going to go through kind of what those, you know, how they use those within the definitions. And we hope to by the end, as the Mayor said, by 7:30, that we will have the consensus on our PBB community results and related definitions. So I get the pleasure of turning this over to Chris Fabian and his team. And Chad, they're going to need to share screen please, so if they could have that ability, we can get started.
Rebecca.
Excuse me, could we, I'm sorry, could we go through the roll call and have everyone's, the city and state where they're attending from remotely?
Thank you. Vicki, go ahead.
Commissioner Blood.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Battle Creek, Calhoun County.
Vice Mayor Ferris.
Present, attending remotely from Boyne City, Michigan.
Commissioner Herring.
Here, live from Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Lance is absent.
Mayor Banky.
From Battle Creek, Michigan, remotely.
Commissioner Morris, also absent.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Battle Creek, Calhoun County.
Commissioner Sophia.
Also absent. And Commissioner Kathy Zander-Wilson.
Present remotely from Battle Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you Vicki, I appreciate that. Now I will turn it over to Chris and then hopefully he can share his screen.
Sounds great, and it looks like screen sharing is enabled, so thank you. Hello, everybody, and thank you so much for having us back. This is the third workshop in the creation of new results and result definitions. I have an agenda up here that provides us a little bit of a recap from what we had gone through in meeting one and meeting two, and also our objective here today for meeting three. We heard the first objective, which is to end the meeting on time, so that's great, thank you Mayor. And our other objective, as Rebecca stated, was to hopefully arrive at agreement with the results and the result definitions that we have been working on for the past two meetings overall. In terms of our facilitation, Brad Stecker, Eric Kack and I are going to go through and review each and every one of the results, as well as the definitions, and we will guide you through the type of input that we're looking for today. You did such a tremendous job last time, I'll get into that in the recap in just a moment, but you gave us a lot of feedback, and we've done our best to plow through that feedback and make sure that we have updated the result definitions so that they are clearly reflecting all that you said. So, we're really looking forward to today. I have the next steps component at the very bottom. Just a reminder that we're creating these results and the definitions for the purposes of supporting your priority-based budgeting process. With these results and definitions, departments can evaluate their programs relative to them, and that informs the priority lens in your budget process overall. But beyond priority-based budgeting, we have communities today who are using their results and definitions as they are evaluating spending proposals for the American Rescue Plan Act. The criteria, the results and definitions provide a great framework for thinking through and weighing and evaluating and prioritizing various proposals that are coming in for ARPA. We've had some communities who have even used results and definitions to evaluate agenda items for council meetings. So that's kind of crazy talk, but it's been done before. It provides a very nice framework and lends through which to prioritize. So, we thank you for all of the effort that you've put in thus far, including your residents in Battle Creek who informed this process from the very beginning and the citizen survey that went out. So without further ado, I will get on with the recap and the summary. I'll expand my screen for just a second here, and then I'll actually keep it in notes mode as you are providing some of your feedback overall. So this is a collage, just to give you a sense of what we've tried to do since the last time that we met. And that is, we took a ton of notes from our last meeting, and if you remember what our last meeting was all about, we had moved from results concepts, which are the high-level overarching reasons for the existence of the services that you provide. And then we were trying to drill down into these result definition statements where your residents had provided their input for their support. Your feedback during the last meeting included making sure that these definitions were specific to Battle Creek, that they weren't really vague, and that they meant something that is going to make your result definitions far more rich and useful overall. So we have done our best, we went back through and watched the Facebook Live. Here's a picture of that, and we had the saved chat as well as our own notes overall. And what we tried to do, you had given us suggestions and recommendations on places to combine some of these statements overall, so that your result definitions were nice and clear and concise, and they could be understood, but weren't vast and numerous, which was really important. And then you also gave us feedback on specific wording in certain instances that you wanted us to include, and we'll try to either make mention of those or highlight them as we go, just so that you see your fingerprints on the definitions that we have proposed. As we work our way through each result and definition, and here's a summary of the results in order, starting lineup if you will, we'll look for some light word smithing. It's totally appropriate. We're giving you our best summary for all of those definitions, and we'll show you the format, and then we'll pause after each reading of the definitions to still get any feedback or tweaks that you're looking for. And, of course, if anybody has a major suggestion to make, those are appropriate too, but we will try to stay true to the path that we did from the citizen survey to the definitions to your feedback to what you're seeing here as we go through them. I wanted to just make one, or a quick point here on this slide. You'll see in the orange bar, it says "Community Oriented Results," and just to remind you of what that means, in priority-based budgeting that has specific meaning, these are the results that help us evaluate programs and services offered directly to the residents of Battle Creek. And so, programs are scored and evaluated relative to these results and the definitions that we'll get into, and all of it is founded upon what you see in the silver bar down below, great governance, the running of effective government overall. And we're actually going to get into the governance definitions as well, because they were a part of the survey. So we're going to cover all of these within the time period and strive for meeting that objective of getting any tweaks and pushing towards agreement and completion, so we can use these results and definitions in the next part of the process ahead. So that is the agenda. I'm not sure if chat is up and running, I was going to look at that real fast. Oh, it is. No, it's disabled. I got the chat bubble, but it's disabled. If there are questions along the way, or you need me to stop or clarify anything, I think our protocol will just be come off mute, and I have a second screen with all of your pictures on it, so I'll try to look up from time to time as well. I see a hand up.
Commissioner Blood?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for opening it up, Chris, to a few questions, and I just want to make sure, I went through my notes before we got started, and I just want to kind of put this out there and have you correct me, so I have the correct frame of mind going into this. So, the purpose of PBB, what we're doing now is to leverage taxes to fund the future we want based on the community results and within good governance.
Yes.
Okay.
That is a very nice way of summarizing it.
Well, you guys said it, I just took notes. So, okay, fantastic, I just wanted to make sure that was out there and I had a good understanding of what we were doing and how my frame needed to be for this, so thank you.
I appreciate that. And that is, while PBB is why we are involved, Chris, Brad and Eric, you nailed it for the purpose of the overall priority-based budgeting exercise, the way to budget by priorities. And in addition to PBB, these results and definitions can also be used for other activities as well. Okay, well, I'm going to start with economy, we're going to go in order here, and we'll share it as we go, I'm going to lead off for the first three. Brad Stecker will take on a few of the results that he worked on specifically, and Eric Keck will wrap us up, but I'll start with economy. And all of the results that we'll show you today and their definitions follow this template that we created, and I'll give it more explanation in this first go around, and hopefully it'll start to make sense. The definitions that you influenced last time around are what you see here in the center. And this is also modifications or additions to what the citizens and residents weighed in on when they completed the survey overall. So I'm going to actually read through each and every one of these. The left-hand column is shorthand, if you will, they're Cliff Notes. We thought that it might be helpful just to have a quick summary theme or concept about what the definition entails, if you're just looking at it and saying, okay, am I making sure that we have the right verb, is there any word missing here? And then over on the right-hand side, we have a column, we didn't use it all too often throughout the slides that you'll see next, but it says, do we need any clarification from you all, or do we want to point anything out specifically? And you'll see in economy, I just had noted childcare, because that was something really specific that we wanted to make sure and add back in to the definition. So, throughout the slides, we'll see examples of that, where we're just trying to draw your attention to something that we added. Okay, so, I'll just read from the top, the first row was a definition that says, when Battle Creek creates a business-friendly environment that encourages business and economic growth for everyone, then you are achieving this result of a healthy economy. So, as you think about these definitions, departments will use them as I try to make the case that if my program does this, creates a business-friendly environment that encourages business and economic growth for everyone, then I'm making a case that my program influences this result. I will also let you know, one of our commitments from the last meeting was that we wanted to make sure that elements of equity and inclusivity and access were included, that Battle Creek is serving a community for everyone, and so you'll see some of those terms that you suggested, but we just wanted to make sure were incorporated into the definition. The second definition was supports local businesses by providing and supporting, sorry, typo, here we go, quality job creation, providing and supporting quality job creation, workforce training, and transportation that is equitable for all. The third definition provides a place to live. I'm sorry, provides a place to live, provides local workforce with quality housing, safety, transportation access, utilities, childcare, and access to basic needs for all. The next definition was recruits, attracts and retains a diverse mix of businesses. We have offers of vibrant downtown and commercial areas that are attractive to visitors and for tourism, and we have encourages and promotes sustainable development and redevelopment. Again, the left-hand side is our shorthand, just so you have the concept, and what I'd like, love to do, as I read through those, I'm looking for, was there anything that struck you that you're hoping, you know, you would offer a suggestion to tweak something, or are you happy? And I'll pause there and open it up for your feedback. We have a hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So, I was the one who brought up childcare in the last workshops, and just wanted to be really clear in what I was asking, and I understand that childcare is a support for the existing workforce, but in and of itself, it is a workforce, and they are also businesses. And so, my intent there was to be explicit about, when we talk about supporting local businesses, can we in some way make sure that we're being explicit about those also including childcare businesses that need support? So that's where I want it to be, that I'd like to propose that it be a little more explicit than it is right now.
Do you have any, do you have a suggestion, and this would be something that'd be really helpful for today?
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know if this is at the exclusion of, right? Like, so if I look, it supports local businesses, including childcare businesses by providing and supporting quality job creation, I would be over the moon if that language could be incorporated. I don't know if that makes it look like it's at the exclusion of others, right? But I do know that it is an invisible industry right now, that people see only as a workforce support. And if we're going to elevate it to the point where it really, you know, gets the attention it deserves, I'm open for other suggestions of how we get it positioned. And I think it's just, you know, when we think about small business development, micro enterprise work that we do with our, you know, small business office, they often get overlooked, or you don't even know that they qualify, right? That they would be able to look in those places. So the city being a little more forward-thinking about that, and how we bring them into the fold is something I'd like to advocate for.
I heard, I heard a recommendation that would make you over the moon, and then I want, I just wanted to take the opportunity as well to make sure that we're emphasizing for the purposes of priority-based budgeting, these definitions are going to be a communication tool, where if I'm a department and I have a program, and I'm simply trying to tell you, does my program have a strong influence on this result of economy, or a weaker influence, I'm going to use these definitions as my logical case, and that these are agreed upon. And so, one other thought I want you to react to, if it's okay, is, would adding childcare in the way that you are suggesting help or make a difference to a department knowing how these result definitions are going to be used?
So I would welcome the feedback of those who run departments, and not me. I think that, and it could be that it's a process question, and that it's not meant to be in these definitions, I'm okay with that too. I just really want to make sure that we're having those conversations, I don't know where else to have them. So, right now, this is presented in front of me, so I'm bringing it up. It could be that this is a conversation that Ted and I have, and I bring more information to the small business group around this, and I'm okay with that, I just need a little direction. And so, I'm bringing it up here to see if there is opportunity to include it in these definitions, and if not, where would be the appropriate time and space to have those conversations?
I really appreciate what you just said, but I would open it up to the rest of the group, Ted, I think you specifically, and with all due respect, my quick take, just for what it's worth, is that while it completely fits in a larger discussion around initiatives that you might want to start, and ARPA funding potentially, that this is, you have something on your mind that's really specific, for the purposes of priority-based budgeting, I'm not, I'm not positive that it would materially change the definition that would impact the city programs that are being provided. That's just my opinion to help out the conversation.
I appreciate that. Sophia, Ted, if you have any guidance, again, I'm just trying to raise the issue when and where I can, where it fits, I think is, I'm completely open to any feedback.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I would like to, you know, kind of follow the lead of the manager with regards to how she would see staff participate in this conversation, so I don't, I don't want to get out of, out ahead of where Rebecca would want us to be at with that, but I'm happy to provide some feedback, depending, again, on what Rebecca would like us to interact in during this session.
No, I think we want to be interactive, Ted, if you want to take that, I mean, I can talk through too, about, you know, the question is, do we leave childcare in both supporting local workforce and supporting local business? And then how do, because the city, we don't provide childcare, but we support the systems that support childcare in our community, if I said that right. So, we want to make sure that how it's worded, it puts us in a position to continue to provide the support structures for the business, but doesn't necessarily call out us to be in the business of childcare, if that make, if that makes sense. Because as I think about us going back, and, you know, one of the things we do as staff, and we'll talk about that kind of as a wrap-up with all of this, is we have to go back, one is reevaluate our program inventories, which is every service that we provide, score and cost them. So, you know, if there is a staff member and/or Ted, whoever, that wants to comment on perhaps the support systems that you have that could support a business such as childcare, feel free to share that. We know that, you know, Ted and his team do a lot of support for small businesses, and you know, that, that seems to be covered in the results definition that is there. However, I heard what you said, Commissioners Zander-Wilson, is that it feels like a lost or an unspoken business or set of businesses that, that may need to be called out. I know when we had our meeting, kind of our pre-meeting yesterday, we looked at it in workforce, but I'm recognizing that that's not the lingo that I always talk about, but it is your lingo, Commissioners Zander-Wilson, and if it's, if it always seems to get lost as lumped in workforce, then perhaps it makes sense then to move it out of workforce into the local business and, and call it out, as we have called out transportation, but recognizing that we provide kind of support structures to them, we don't actually provide that business, whereas we do provide transportation and we do have some workforce training. So just want to make the clarification, I think that was what Chris was trying to say too, is when we go and score our programs against this, are we helping our departments be able to define if the work they're, they're doing fits within this result definition?
And I get that what I'm up against right now is a paradigm shift, because I'm not suggesting the city go into the business of doing any childcare ever, that's not what you do, but I also think that it's, it is continually placed or viewed as a support to getting people to go to work. When in and of itself, it's an industry that really could use the support of a small business office, or micro enterprise loans, et cetera, and so, this really more is much more about, I think, implementation than it is about prioritization. I just want at every turn, be able to emphasize that if, if and when I can. So I think it belongs in both, I just don't know how, and again, it might be in the implementation, not necessarily in these definitions.
Ted, do you have anything that you want to add, or any other department heads that may be part of the supporting local businesses? Please feel free, again, I can't see everybody, because now you've become like a little View Master, that dates me, so don't date me, but it looks like a little View Master strip, and I can only see some of you, so please feel free to speak out if I can't see you.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds has a hand up.
Okay, thank you, I can't see that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Commissioner. Rebecca, now, as far as I knew, the fort, they had a childcare for late workers and so forth and so on, does that still, is that still happening? Do we have, still have a daycare out there? I know it's not our city's daycare, but I'm looking at the workers out there. Do we still have one? I know it was Children's Place in the Park, is there another childcare facility out there at the fort?
You know, there, there used to be one at the corner, but that is not in existence anymore, so I don't know, Ted, am I speaking out of turn? I don't know that there is one for the fort any longer.
Yeah, I think you were, I think you were talking about the one that used to be in the Robbins Building that's now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so no one took over that?
Vice Mayor, did you say something?
I believe it closed about six years ago, six or seven years ago, yeah, so there is not.
Children's Place in the Park, but, but no one took over that though, Katie? No. No. Okay.
Rebecca, if I, oh, I'm sorry. If I could just add, just to Commissioners Zander-Wilson's comments, just, I think that our small business development team is fairly flexible and nimble, and can respond to kind of, you know, the priorities of the Commission, as it were, recognizing that those, those tend to change over time, so I, I guess I would say that I understand Commissioner Zander-Wilson's concern that by adding the language, it might seem exclusionary to other businesses, and maybe the way to go to work around that is to simply by saying, support local businesses, including childcare, by providing, which then doesn't exclude anybody else, and I think we, as a, as a small business development team, can respond to that while still continuing to provide support for all local businesses.
This is the point, Mayor. Sorry, I have a really bad connection. I think that that makes a lot of sense, Ted, and I, yeah, I just want this to be looked at, you know, for the past couple of years, we've had a really focus on shapes of businesses, and I think that we're at the point now where we need to branch out from that, and childcare has been identified multiple times as a need in our community, and I think that that's one that we really need to support at this time, as people are going back to work and finding new ways to work.
For what it's worth, we've seen this multiple times, that kind of parenthetical point, that doesn't exclude any other businesses at all, and just helps you to make sure that it's saying what you want it to say. This is a, this is a great recommendation from the PBB perspective of how we've seen result definitions used. Another.
Thank you, Chris. So, if we move childcare from local workforce up to local business, then under local workforce provides, so it say, so first of all, I would just say, provides the local workforce with quality housing, that provides a place to live, and then provides, I think that's kind of like a double whammy, so I would just, in my personal opinion, just start with, provides a local workforce with quality housing, transportation, but the childcare part, because we're making it the local business and we're not providing childcare, I'm not sure that that's where it should be. I, Kathy, I'm not sure what you think about there, because that kind of gets into what you're not trying to say. You agree? Okay. So, so that's what I would do, I agree Ted is having it as something as supporting the systems, had you, as you stated here, including childcare, because I think we've noticed, especially in this past year, that childcare is one of those things that is really necessary, and being that we live in a city that has, you know, a 24/7 workforce, especially out at the fort, that's something we need to focus on. The other question I would have is, I know when we talked last, I had asked how senior staff was engaged or would be engaged around this, and at that point, they hadn't, but I know Rebecca, you let us know they would be engaged, so thank you for that. So I'm wondering if senior staff can talk about how they were included in this, what they feel about the definitions, and where we stand with them on where we're at on this point for this slide. Thank you.
For clarification, this is the first time that For clarification, this is the first time that we're all seeing these, do you know what I mean? So senior staff hasn't seen these as they're defined because we needed to get kind of the consensus from the commission. But you make a good point is that senior staff is here, that most that could be here are here. And if anybody would like to comment on the results definitions as part of a con, the, the result, um, economy, please feel free to do so. I think that's what, is that what you meant, Commissioner Blood?
No, nope. So, um, no, so I had specifically asked, uh, back at the May meeting that how senior staff was engaged around this or would be engaged around this. And, um, I think it was clarified that staff, senior staff and staff who are kind of over these seven areas and definitions would work with the Resource X team on drafting a document based on everything we had talked about. So they would be included in this process. So once we got to today, we would have a very succinct document that, um, would fit what the city and staff, um, you know, and experts in their field were already doing and working on and how, yeah, it might drive the future of their departments.
That was not my understanding based on your comments, so apologies for that. Um, again, we try not to get out in front of the commission. And like I said, we are, we just put finalization with the Resource X team on these results definitions. And we talked through the feedback that we got from the last workshop, which is how we got to this particular product. Certainly if we, once we have consensus or guidance from the commission, we will talk through these as a senior staff team. If there are any recommended changes, we certainly would bring that forward before it became finalized or put in front of the city commission as a resolution to set.
Um, I have something to, um, just mention for the area of economy. There may be an opportunity, um, that we haven't yet included regarding attracts visitors and tourism. When we talk about economy, it's really important that we have, um, a healthy economy with the residents that choose to live in our community. And so I'm wondering if we could expand or should expand this to be, um, attractive to residents, visitors and tourism, because I think that it's important that we're supporting our own economy and not just relying on, um, visitors and others from the outside of our community.
That would be in the definition. So it would be offers a vibrant downtown and commercial area that is attractive to residents, not necessarily just in the themes and concepts, but in the definition itself. Sorry, Commissioners Endo Wilson, I apologize for
I was just, I was just going to support that completely. I was downtown this weekend and I have to tell you that it was, it was wonderful to be down there and see everybody together. And it's been a while since it's felt like that. So, and most of the people I know that were there were residents.
Fantastic. All right. Any last opportunity on economy or we'll move on to safety, but that was great. That's exactly what we're hoping for today. Okay. Thank you. Let's move to safety. So, uh, and maybe I'll read the, the themes and the concept along with the definition. So we had a, a law enforcement theme. The result definition was enforces laws fairly, justly and equitably. We have feeling of personal safety, supports feeling safe throughout the city, in your home, in your neighborhood, in downtown, in commercial areas. That was one of your recommendations for a great combination. We had an element of emergency response prepares for and responds to emergencies, including life threatening medical emergencies, fires, natural disasters and epidemics. We had a safe travel and mobility, create safe travel through the city for motorists, pedestrians and cyclists, especially in the downtown and commercial areas. That's my only note on clarification was that was a recommendation from the commission was especially in downtown and commercial areas. I just wanted to point that out. We had fire protection and response provides equitable fire response, fire prevention, education. And we had police protection and response provides crime prevention and personal safety from violent crime for all. So open it up. I won't rush you. I just give you a chance.
Rebecca, I had
For the second one, could we also add place of employment?
Hmm, yes.
This may come from my, uh, go ahead.
Can we also include schooling, schools?
Um, can you, I'm sorry, can you get, um, I'm just misunderstood.
Schools?
In schools?
Yes.
Yes. Great.
This is Larry from the airport. I, I think under safe travel and mobility, I think I recognize what we were trying to accomplish there. When we say for motorists, pedestrians and cyclists, but I'm wondering if we maybe should just say for all modes of transportation. Because we have people that want safe public transit. We have people that want to use an airport that's safely run. We have people that want to be able to ride bike paths that are safely run and managed. I, I'm just wondering if we maybe maybe encompass, uh, better encompass all of the modes of transportation that we offer.
So Larry, would you recommend, oh, it's a transportation, eliminate, eliminating motorists, pedestrians and cyclists? Because all modes of transportation is covering that?
I mean, in my mind, yeah, we want to be multimodal, um, so that, you know, that would include all of those.
Yes, I think we should keep it listed so that it's, it's clear.
Yeah, I could say transportation, including motorists, pedestrian cyclists.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead, Commissioner. It's your floor.
Well, thank you. Does, does that get at Larry's need to, to see, our flights included in there? So if we're including motorists, pedestrians and cyclists, is it inclusive enough? Or again, like when we say including, it doesn't mean excluding, excluding others, but is there a need to, to name that? And then my only follow-up comment, and then I can mute again, is the question in the bottom about equity woven throughout the definition sufficiently. I, equity was one of our approaches, was it not, when we prioritized it?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I'd be curious, you know, how do all of these things that we're saying be viewed through an equitable lens? I, I appreciate them still in the definitions. I think they need to be there explicitly in some of these, but I, I do hope that our intent was that everything is done through that approach or lens.
To the, I think there are two points on the table. One is, I, I think, I think we resolved that we used including motorists, pedestrians and cyclists. And Larry, were you feeling okay? For, uh, air travelers. Okay, great. And the second point was weaving in equity throughout the definitions. And certainly if you have an, an additional recommendation that fits in for today, and just please let us know and we can add it in here. The second point on the equity was, um, also just a reminder, beyond results, there is another set of evaluation criteria for all of the city services. And we call them basic program attributes. An example of a basic program attribute is the degree to which a service is mandated. That's a reason that you provided. Someone is mandating you to do it. Cost recovery, population served. And equity is going to become a basic program attribute. That was one of the recommendations from the first and second meetings together. So that is one other area where every city service will also be evaluated specifically to equity. But finally, weaving back to your point, if there are any definitions where you have an additional suggestion, please, please make them.
I, you know, I just don't, I don't want to forget that, um, it's not just police and fire response, but maybe even under emergency response, we put in crisis, emergency response, because that's really the emerging vision and, and a strategic goal for our community. That, that not just that we respond, that we can be notified, mobilized, but also prepared to respond to whatever it is we encounter, which by the way, may not be a fire. It may not be a personal injury and it may not be a crime. It may be all of those other things that, that, that come together and, and to a point of turbulence that then ultimately results in a crime had we not arrived. It could be a, you know, lack of food, um, you know, job, hopelessness, addiction, so children in the home. So, um, that is, and we already have that community, uh, Fusion Center slash Crisis Response Center up and running. So I don't want, I think we need to put those words and be that specific because it's, it's just unusual, although it's an emerging strategy today.
It's a wonderful point. Can, can you help me out with, uh, where would you see it best fit in as you, as you read through the definition?
Well, I'm looking at, um, themes and concepts. So you say emergency response. Well, I think originally, and, and I don't take this wrong, but that was a very conventional definition where it really is crisis, emergency response.
Gotcha.
There, it would be prepares for all spectrum, all spectrum, no, all domains of, of crisis.
Jim, maybe you want, maybe it's crazy. I'm trying to, I'm, I'm taking the CIT and seeing, can we put crisis intervention or is that not broad enough? Do we respond to? It's a question.
Well, no, it's a good one. And that's why I'm trying in our limited space here where I say all domains, domains may not be a right word. I'll come up with a better one tomorrow. But, but that's what I'm referring to is that's mental health, but it may not be mental health that we're trying to address at that moment. It, it may be, um, you know, something different. And so it may be someone's acting out in a moment of, um, emotional distress or trauma, right? That's not mental health. That's just normal. And so that's why I'm trying to cover it all, because not every response it can, matter of fact, many responses aren't quite that easy that they are contained within just paramedics, fire and police. And that's really the point that we keep trying to emphasize in how we, how we are doing things. And if this is a strategic document, then at least we try and use the words that help us think and plan strategically.
Is there, is there a question for you, maybe for Rebecca? Is there a difference between crisis and emergency in your mind? So that they need to be named separately? Because, you know, I think of a fire, it could be a crisis and it is an emergency, right? So I'm trying to think of, of that because when I think that it, this is not clear enough for me in this definition. The approach that we are taking as a city that isn't just about responding in the traditional way, right? That it is, um, about this collaborative approach to addressing crisis. And, um, I'm not sure we capture that here right now.
Yeah, I like that. Can we, can we add another line or is that, do we be that creative at this moment? Because you could say crisis response center, which is really what I'm trying to get at. And then stick with the emergency response that we want, you know, prepared, ready, professional first responders. So that sort of gets that out of the way. But at, but at the same time, we're adding another line, which is really, um, the two are braided together.
So.
Okay, so you lost, you lost, you lost me. And so I'm just trying to help guide them. So are you saying, when you say a different line, it's still part? Are you asking them to add another column?
Yes.
Okay. You're not trying to have them. So take off crisis, emergency response as a theme concept, because you're going to capture it in a new, in a new row. Sorry, not column.
Yeah. So under a new theme and concept, you can put crisis response center. And we can define that. And prepares for
Now, the, and the, and the only thing I ask is that, um, how did we capture this in the surveys that we used in the community? Because that's not any of the language that we used. So maybe that's a question for Chris and his team.
I'll show you.
I, yeah, I don't recall exactly, but I, I, I do remember there was some, but if you don't know what words to use, I mean, we can, we could extrapolate what people were asking for and then what we're actually doing without being specific enough to say someone should have asked for a crisis response center.
Sorry about that.
Is it just me? Is this really small print?
I think it depends on your viewing device, chief.
Mine is small print. That's why I had to turn my screen off. So I wasn't squinting up close.
I'm going to pause my share real quick and try to bring up. Oh, it's on the other screen. And bring back. Make this bigger in just a moment. Here's safety. So th- this is, these were the responses from the survey itself, all that you're seeing here on the left-hand side and the, uh, feedback from participants. These were broadened in our last meeting together, and that's what you're seeing, uh, in the presentation. So as it pertains to emergency response, um, we, there was very simple in the original survey, is prepared for emergencies like natural disasters and epidemics. Your feedback from the last meeting broadened that. Um, Rebecca, that's, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Sure.
I just want to make sure we're capturing, um, just trying to capture that, you know, the data that we gathered before and then at the guidance. Because remember, we're going to have to, we have to score against each one of these definitions and just trying to make sure that that's clear for staff when, when we get to that particular point. That's why I was asking, so crisis emergency response and crisis response center, that reflects both what you were saying, Chief Blacker and Commissioners Endo Wilson. Just, I'm just trying to recap.
I, I was under the impression that emergency response stays the way it was, goes back to what we initially had. And then what chief is asking for is an additional row that is about our crisis response approach. I think center makes it sound too programmatic. I think this is really about our approach to crisis. As a response. But was that correct? Is that what you were thinking, chief?
It, it was. So you can even say just crisis response and leave it at that. And then it's just a matter of trying to define it, but that, that's, you're, you're right. And then if you look at the four, the, the numbers two, three, four and five, I think, on our survey that was just shown, those are pretty generic, but you can certainly extrapolate out of this. The new strategic way of responding The new strategic way of responding to all, all sorts of crisis. And we're doing it strategically, since that's what this is. It's a, it's a guide through crisis response. So we're recognizing that it's just a different type of response. And so under definitions, it, well, let me know when you're, when you're ready.
Ready.
Okay, thanks, Chris. So this could be prepared to respond to, to all crises. Whether it be through trauma, the experiences of trauma, past and presence, present.
Chief, I'm, I'm curious if, and this is a question for you, maybe to Rebecca around the scoring part of this, because that's all new to me. And I'm still trying to get oriented to it. But for me, the benefit and the highlight of this work is in the collaborative approach. Is there room in this for that language to be included about, about the collaboration with community partners? So collaborates to, to prepare, to respond, or something that is really about, this is not just the city doing this. This is really you with community partners.
That's how I'm trying to end it, Commissioner. And it could be that simple. I'm sort of doing this on the fly is and with our community partners. And with all available social support services.
Maybe it's to put collaborate with community partners or collaborate with social service community, something like that.
In, in partnership with, in collaboration with, sure, that's perfect.
Well, we, we tend to not use the partnership word because we've gotten advice from, but collaborate is usually pretty good. Yeah. Is that the right, is it social support services? Does that make sense? Okay.
There.
I, I do have a question. Certainly what's driving our themes and our concepts is the responses that we received back from our community. And you can see that each of those areas are reflected with what we have to date. I think that for many people, when they think of safety, similar to what Chief Blocker stated, they often think initially police and fire, in, in particular to city services and being responsive to resident needs in that way. An area that I don't see represented here. And so my question is, is it appropriate for us to expand beyond the types of responses that we receive from the community? Because an area that I don't see necessarily represented here is safety in regards to the structures and the places that we live and we work and we frequent for, um, you know, retail. You know, vacant, abandoned, dangerous buildings and ensuring that our properties in our community are, are safe for occupancy and to, to utilize. And so that, that's just a piece when I think of safety that is less common, I think.
It's a wonderful point. Um, I'll give you a quick feedback, quick opinion, uh, just for, you know, for what it's worth category. If I was in a code enforcement group or a building inspections, uh, depart, uh, providing that type of program, I would definitely latch on to this particular definition and make the argument that my program should influence this overarching result of safety. Because we do inspections, uh, to all of the points that you brought up. That would be my argument.
Okay, I could see it aligning there. It, it's not intuitive, I don't feel. It's particularly for anyone who doesn't do that type of work. But I could see where that, that dotted line is made.
And if there's anything that you would advocate to make it stronger, please, please go ahead and suggest it. Uh, but I think it's a great example of the use of these definitions would be the dotted line that you just brought up. For me as a, as a program provider or within a department, I'm trying to use this to make my case that whether or not my program can impact safety. And, and what you brought up is a very true case. And then the question is, is hopefully it's clear that they can use this definition to their advantage as they're communicating about the influence that their program has.
I'm wondering if it was, um, feeling of personal and physical safety? Because structurally, it's more of a physical thing. I mean, you, you personally feel safe, but it's due to physical safety. Does that make sense?
I don't know. That makes sense to me. And I'm also wondering if some of the code enforcement issues are covered by environment and physical appearance.
I do think code enforcement is. I was thinking more inspections. Say it's trace, that's where I was thinking is, but I feel the environmental is where the minimum property maintenance code issues fall.
Great. Fantastic work. Okay. Let's move on to the third result. Thank you again. The third result is transportation and mobility. There were a number of recommendations to consolidate from the citizen survey. So I'll read through these. The theme of ease of mobility for all beyond cars, where the result definition was provides a safe and accessible network of sidewalks, paths, trails and bike lanes, making it easy to walk, bike and move throughout the city. The second, we had connected, accessible, reliable transportation network. Plans, designs, constructs and maintains transportation infrastructure, including roads, bridges, sidewalks, traffic signals, signage and street lighting. Third was basic traffic law enforcement for safe travel ensures the safety of motorists, pedestrians and cyclists through the effective enforcement of traffic laws. And lastly, public transportation accessibility makes it easy to access public transit, short and sweet.
For the last one, can we change it to makes it easy to access and utilize public transit?
Thank you for that. Everyone else feeling pretty good?
I, my, my only comment would be just to make sure we feel comfortable that we're really covering aviation as part of all of transportation and mobility as well.
Ted, do you have any area that currently exists where you might include that?
And I'm kind of looking it over and I'm sure Larry is as well.
I think the second one, connected, accessible, reliable transportation network. Uh, I mean, the airport connects us to the entire world. So that, that might be one place to mention it.
Larry, do you think we could add something along the lines of including the airport roads, bridges, sideways? It's an, it's an infrastructure. It's a facility. It's an asset.
Yeah, I, I do think, I, I think that is the solution, just including it in our list.
Probably easier than saying taxiways and rentals.
Fair. Yeah, it's just be trying to be, um, the use of the including parenthetical is just to help give a clue for everyone scoring. Don't see any other feedback?
Oh, I think we gotta keep moving, Chris, only because I'm watching time and we have to make sure that we have room for public comment at the end as well.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Brad for the next two.
All right. I'll start with utilities, which is the next one. So utilities, we had a lot of good combinations, looking through them. The first theme we have is safe water. That's provides access to safe drinking water and sanitary sewer services. The second one is stormwater slash drainage, and that's provides storm drainage and infrastructure for effective stormwater management and education on reporting and management of misuse. The next one is internet, provides internet access at the neighborhood level. And the last one is utility offset, which is using, utilizing green energy sources to reduce or offset utility costs to the community. Many of these were suggested on verbatim, or maybe a combination of a couple of suggestions. So please feel free to edit at your will.
How realistic is providing internet access at the neighborhood level right now? I, 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 it's a really lofty goal in my mind. It's something that I would love for our community, but something that I see as a very far away thing.
Would you augment it to something like provides internet access or ensures internet is accessible? Just looking for any way that you might change it.
I think the word provide is, there's a, there's a very specific connotation there. So is there a way to use a word like explore or collaborate on, or you know, something like that? Because we know that there is very robust discussions going on about broadband access and digital gaps, those types of things. And we're at the table as part of those conversations. So I appreciate you saying that, Vice Mayor, because I was worried about that word provides. Because I, you know, I don't necessarily see us, the city as a provider of internet until these other, you know, kind of discussions, um, play through in, 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 in the areas that they're doing, that they're having right now, if that makes sense.
I wonder if it's, yeah, I appreciate that. I wonder if it's collaborates to expand internet access, period. I, I mean.
I would agree with that. Yeah.
Yes.
Neighborhoods, rural areas as well.
Yes, we'll have an issue with that. Yes.
Well, remember, we're talking about the city. So, and we do have rural areas of the city, you're right. But there are still a lot of connections we could make out county as well. So I, I like, I like that. What did you, you said internet act, oh yeah, that's what I was to expand, to expand.
And it collaborates to expand internet access. Yeah. Instead of ensures.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
I have a suggestion for that last bullet point where it says use enter our green energy sources and add and processes. Green, yeah, right there.
Fantastic.
Cool.
We should have Brad beat all of these.
All right, let's get to the next one. So this is, this was a combination. This is a couple of questions that you guys had a lot of really good collaborations. So you decided to combine them into environment, physical appearance and community design. So the first theme is, um, there's strong, a strong want to just follow the sustainability plan and call that out. So the first one is just called sustainability plan. Protects and conserves water and other natural resources in line with Battle Creek's environmental sustainability plan. Resource quality is the next theme, promotes practices that maintain clean and healthy air and water for everyday use. The next one is long-term sustainability. And that is educates community about recycling, waste reduction and conservation impacts and learning experiences around diversity, equity and inclusion. The next is attractive community. That's safe, clean and maintained environment and equipment attracts, or maybe to attract both community members and visitors to amenities. Then we have conservation maintains attractive community parks, corridors, gateways, public and community facilities and streets that apply conservation practices when applicable. And the last is development, and that is offers desirable quality neighborhoods with equitable development, accessible sidewalks and transit and preserved historic sites while promoting new development opportunities in line with the city's master plan. That's a lot to take in. So I'm looking over for just a second.
I might be off-center here and someone bring me back. But on sustainability plan, it talks about protects and conserves water and other, other natural resources. So within our sustainability plan, I think it goes beyond just those two things. I think it's much more broad. I mean, we look at not just that, but, um, you know, waste management practices, land use, et cetera. So, uh, maybe, um, I have the sustainability plan up in front of me. So I was reading some of the statement of values and some of the principles and implementation directives in the plan and how that might be worded to actually be the definition. I know Carl Fetters is on here, who I think would be in line to maybe help with this, but I don't see his face on the screen. Um, so.
Question, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Just because you have the plan up, if we just, if we took out the, if we put protects and conserves resource, i- is it natural resources or just simply resources in line with the sustainability plan?
Well, it's not just protects and conserves. I don't know, because I, it's not just that, you know? I don't know. Maybe it is, and maybe that's why I'm saying I might have it wrong. But, uh, there's, there's things like efficiently use city buildings, using systems and tools. Budgetary management vendors, like there's a lot more that goes beyond just protect and conserve natural resources. It's a very robust document and up here in the top in that, hang on, I just lost it because I went down. It talks about improving quality of life for future generations. So maybe that using the sustainability plan to improve the quality of life for future generations within Battle Creek. And using that to go back to as the overarching piece, because that's essentially what this is. Yes, we do conserve water, we do protect and we do all of these other things. But the base is because we want to improve the quality of life. Am I making sense? I could be way off pace.
So.
You're doing a great job. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Chris.
I think that's great. And I think that's nice because as the, if the plan changes or if it's set to change at a certain point, you're still following that sustainability plan. So like something like follow Battle Creek's environmental sustainability plan to achieve a better quality of life for residents or you said it in a much more succinct way.
It was just one of the statement of values. I mean, there's, there's quite a number of bullet points. It's on page five, Rebecca, that I'm, I'm on. And so you know, that's, that's the one thing that's holding me up is the sustainability plan. It's just beyond those two things. And if we only use those two things as a measure of a definition, I just don't think it's adequate.
Awesome feedback. That makes total sense. And also I think you kind of. That makes total sense. And also I think you're kind of hitting that in the next one with resource quality anyway. So I think that's a good point and well taken. How do you think it reads now?
Rebecca, what are you thinking?
Kind of get through the plan. I was trying to get through the plan too, because I but you know, you're you're right. I mean, if we keep that at kind of that purpose of the plan, then we address the because I was thinking of the word manage, we have to manage our infrastructure and things, but that simply covers it as defined in the plan. So I think that works.
Anybody else thoughts on that?
I like that too. And it's good that that language will align with the sustainability plan as far as improving quality of life. And then it looks like water is covered in number two already. So, okay, I'm good with it.
One thing that this will kind of force staff to do is when we write our descriptions for our programs, if it if it is in line with the sustainability plan and we make note of that in our program description, that makes scoring it a whole lot easier. So one of two things will happen. Someone will be scored poorly on a program because they didn't specifically highlight that or they didn't read the the plan and they don't know that it's in line. So at the very least, I'll have to go look at the plan.
Yeah, I was gonna mention something very similar. This makes it simpler for scoring of all your programs, the way it's written right now.
Fantastic.
Well, thank you. That worked out great. Eric, we move on to you.
All right, sir. Happy to. Arts and culture. This is one that we were able to distill down some themes and concepts in the very simple words. Venues is the first where again, you're encouraging development of shopping, dining, entertainment venues that are open to all. Under activities, you are supporting cultural arts and musical activities that are available for anyone to participate within. With a clarification here that we recognize from our notes from your previous workshop, specifically, I believe it was Commissioners Zenda Wilson, who was concerned with education related to the arts and where that should play a part within your results and definitions. Next was diversity, promote diverse and inclusive events and venues for culture enrichment and celebration. And then lastly, support for the arts and culture, encouraging collaboration, visibility, promotion and support for the arts and culture as well as adequate funding to support these activities. And again, here, the major question boils down to, as it always does, at what level of funding would there be from the city? But again, this definition does encourage that collaborative piece too, where you might be collaborating with other groups who are also bringing funding such as grants and or just funding directly for your arts and cultural activities.
Okay, I'm gonna say something that might make things messy and it's not my intent. So I'll start with just that. I I see connections, really strong connections with this and our economy definitions upfront in that if we're supporting, you know, artists are also small business owners and entrepreneurs.
Correct.
And so if we are are looking at this through that lens, how are we? Is it clear enough that that we would be supporting them in that same way? And I don't know if it's possible to do those intersections. That's why I bring that up and feel like it's messy because I'm not sure.
I think it's a good connection. It's excellent question. It's one that will require some additional input from your fellow colleagues on the commission.
I keep cutting out. I apologize. Kathy, I think you made a good point. Arts and culture are directly hooked to our economy. And I'm wondering if it could be another thing like how we added in that sentence in parentheses childcare. We could add arts in that area so that when we are supporting and helping new businesses to flourish, we're looking at businesses in the arts and we are specifically helping businesses in the arts.
Is that a suggestion back to economy?
I believe so, sir.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what would be on this slide. So where it says including childcare, I would say and the arts. Because they are another underfunded business in our area.
So that creates the link?
Does that do it for you Kathy? Or we need more here?
No, I think that is it. And I just didn't want to overcomplicate things. I think you've simplified it well enough. Thank you.
That was the easiest way I could think to do it.
Yeah, well done.
Okay.
So I'm curious to hear from staff. I think I saw Duska was on here and I know Duska is over recreation and recreation, I might think as the avenue in which some of these things take place at parks and venues and also with small business development. So Ted in your wheelhouse. So how are you guys feeling about this and the implementation of these definitions to score against? And how might they align with what you're doing? What do you? What are your thoughts?
I'll jump in there real quick to and Commissioner, you're correct. I mean, when we look at our small business development work, we recognize that some of the quality of life components that are necessary to have a supportive ecosystem include a focus on arts and culture. So we you know, I think I'm fairly comfortable with what you've what we've got here. I do think it was wise to make that connection between the the economy piece and the arts and culture piece. Because again, we we think of it or we treat artists as business owners and entrepreneurs in our work as well. So I think we've kind of inherently made that connection. I I'm comfortable with what's here and we're going to continue to focus on some of these arts and culture and quality of life issues in our small business development work.
Okay, well done. Well, moving along, we're next. Our next result is recreation. And again, some of these themes, you did an excellent job at your last workshop consolidating things down. Parks and active lifestyle offers community parks, neighborhood parks, green spaces and lakes and programs that are positioned to provide all residents an equal opportunity for leisure and supportive and active lifestyle. A connected community offers trails and paths that connect the community through a pedestrian and bicycle network that affords mobility for everyone to move freely throughout the entire community. And then lastly, facilities and amenities offers recreation facilities and amenities that are equally maintained and accessible to all residents of the community regardless of their residency or abilities. And again, that last one picked up on, I believe it was again Commissioners Ferris and Wilson were very concerned with the equitable maintenance of all parks, facilities as well as, and I love this because I have a child who has disabilities able to access recreational entities as well. So well done on pointing those things out at your last meeting.
So I appreciate what we were trying to do there, but I'm struggling a little bit with the language. So offers recreational facilities amenities that are equally maintained and accessible to all residents of the community regardless of their residency or abilities.
And I think what I meant by the residency there, what you meant, and I was trying to capture again, was you have areas of your community that may have a park or facility being a desert, park or facility desert. In other words, there's not ready access. Where they live, they might not have a park immediately adjacent to them. And if they do, does it have the amenities that are equal to what other areas of your community have? We can definitely change that language to something other than residency. But I'm not sure how to capture that. So again, if you've got some recommendations for some good wordsmithing here, that would be fantastic.
I don't know if neighborhood gets at it or if it's a matter of like regardless of where they live. Ability.
Yeah. That would work even another simple solution. I think if you do that, Chris, it might have to be or their abilities.
That sounded right to me too. Thanks.
Yeah, you're good.
Now that we got that figured out, I want to mess with it too. I'm wondering if instead of residents, we can just change it to people because we're we're asking people from other communities to come and enjoy our community as well.
Okay.
And the same as above and one of them to provide all it says to provide all residents in the top.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all people. Okay, fair enough. I think that's good too, because obviously you might have individuals who are at a business. They take the time and a break to go out and then take a nature bath within one of your facilities.
With without pro get or you know, prolonging this too too long. I just looking at parks and active lifestyles, I wonder if we could just a little bit of wordsmithing. Offers community and neighborhood parks. And then offers community and neighborhood parks, green spaces and access to waterways. Because I think I think it's more than just lakes, it's rivers and and you know, and and other
Okay.
water component. I I just personally like that a little bit better. But I would defer to the group.
Ed, does this capture it? How you were suggesting?
And and I think it could be it could be waterway or waterways or water resources, either one.
I like that Ted, because we offer more than just a couple lakes. We have kayaking on rivers and other such things. So nice catch.
Okay.
It just I'm sorry, just to clarify there too. I didn't necessarily mean to pull the programming language out of there. Yeah.
So Chris, go up before that and take out the word and just say green spaces, access to waterways and programs. Yep. And programs. Yeah. Perfect.
Thank you.
That's a really good qualitative work right there.
All right, Eric, we have some thumbs up.
Okay.
Ready for governance.
Governance. This is one of my favorites. Again, without good governance, nothing can transpire positively in the community. As you right again, were very intentional in your last workshop. Some of the themes that we identified were accessibility. The city acts in an honest, accessible, open and transparent way and responsive to its citizenry. And again, you might want to change citizenry to people as as from the last last section. Best practices, the city utilizes best practice in financial management policies and practices while providing valuable services for the taxes paid. Respectful, the city treats everyone fairly and with respect as well as communicates key information about issues that affect them in a timely manner. There was collaboration. The city collaborates with other governmental entities on regional issues as well as with its community stakeholders to build a better tomorrow for everyone. And then lastly competence, this is an important one too, as was brought forth last workshop. The city hires a workforce focused on service excellence and that works towards planning and building a positive community future.
I'm wondering if there's value in expanding under best practices a revenue stream beyond sort of taxes. You know, we have a lot of grant resources and other types of funding sources that it's important that we utilize best practices in the expenditure of those.
Yeah, I like that.
So Eric, did you have the recommendation? I'm sorry.
Ms. Gillette made a great comment there. I think maybe providing valuable services for the resource, you know, something like for the resources available, maybe.
Resources received.
Resources received. That's good too. Thank you, Linda. That plays well for everyone.
Can I recommend that in respectful, we have the city treats everyone fairly and equitably. Somehow equitably in there. I think we've prioritized that enough that it feels relevant to put in there somehow. I think the grammar needs to be worked with, but.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah, recognizing that some of these take some time to kind of soak into the collective consciousness.
I think you've done it.
I just have one one thing under competence. Sorry, I feel like we need something that 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 something like qualified persons or you know, it's not just that they're going to provide excellent customer service is what it sounds like there, but it the city hires a a qualified workforce.
That's a good ad.
And that's it. I'm out.
No, you're fine. That's again, that's an excellent point. It's not just hiring anybody with a pulse, but you want people that are qualified to do the work.
Okay, I'm gonna throw in one more. I just have a word that I feel is missing from this section and that's engagement. And I don't know if that would fit, you know, we mentioned communication under the respectful theme. We've also got collaboration. So I don't know if it's in collaboration where we talk about collaboration and engagement or.
Jessica, it could fit up here too. City accent and honest acceptable, open and transparent way and is engaging and responsive to its people.
I like that. Yeah, engaging and responsive is really good.
That's good.
Thank you.
We could also add that down under collaboration. The city engages and collaborates.
Yeah.
We could add it in both.
I like that too. That's another good ad.
Wonderful.
Well, commission and executive team and staff, well done. This is important work. This is that piece of work that again, will will help you all to not only take ownership, because you've already done that by your participation, but again, help with accountability and making sure that these things are followed through with moving forward. So well done.
Okay, let's turn it over to Rebecca and see if Rebecca would like to just summarize everything that has taken place or if not. Ask if you have any questions, Rebecca. I don't want to put you on the spot, but at the same time, I want to make sure that you're on solid footing.
No, that's that's great, Mary. I appreciate that. Do you want to do public comment or would you like me to summarize first?
Summarize first.
Okay, sure. Thank you. I appreciate this. It does feel like this has been a journey. And I appreciate all the input tonight and and please know and thank you Commissioner Blood for bringing it up. Blood, for bringing it up. We'll make sure that we go back over it as a senior staff team. And if we have any additional recommendations, that would be shared with the commission prior to it coming for formal adoption at the commission meeting, if, if that's acceptable. But what we're going to do, once we finalize all of this, is staff will have to go back and redo all of their program inventories. They'll create, you know, they'll review and amend the list of all the services that we provide, and then those will be costed, costed scored. That, that's, it, it, when I say it, it sounds like such an easy thing, but it actually isn't. When you create a list of everything that we provide, and then you score it against these definitions and results. And as the PBB team has alluded, you know, there's, there's a method to the scoring that includes program attributes and et cetera. And, you know, we'll be happy to share that. And I remember also commissioners maybe wanting to be a part of portions of those scoring. So we'll make sure that we provide that opportunity, because we make sure that scoring happens with a cross, cross departmental, multi-departmental team, so that there's a voice from all of the departments in those scoring teams, because clearly, everybody would feel that they're a one. And we want to make sure that it gets scored accordingly. So that's always an exciting time and engaging and energized time. But, you know, this is something that we, we use in all, you know, in all of the things that we do. You know, if I just think about what's coming up, we want to utilize these results and definitions as we think about deploying ARPA funds. You know, this was a huge exercise that we did with the community through the surveys, and we just engaged you and our senior leadership team in three workshops to make sure that we all understood the language of the results and their definitions. And it definitely needs to be as, as, it needs to be a part of our allocation of ARPA dollars. And, and so when we come forward with the commission for those, please know that we'll be doing that in that particular manner. And then, and then this is also how the city manager goals are established. So af, you know, so once this evaluation period is done, after October 1 of 2021, the commission will come together and set the city manager goals for the next basically year or two, using our party-based budgeting results and definitions. So, you know, this is not the last time that you're going to see this information. And, and as we bring forward the fiscal year 23 budget, it will be, we will utilize this information to prepare that as well. So please know, there's lots of next steps. And we just appreciate your input. And thank you, Chris, and PBB team for, for being our, our guides during this particular process. And, and you're not done with Battle Creek yet either. So we'll be working with you as we get through the scoring, the costing, and then our inventories. And also remember, we use the same scoring methodology in our capital improvement program. So again, this, we take this incredibly serious. This is not just a, a group of things that we sit on a shelf. We actually use it in the daily things that we do, the big things we do, particularly around resource allocation. So thank you, Mayor. That is my wrap up, and we'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to public comment. And will the IT director or assistant, please let me know if there's anyone in the queue for public comment.
That would be Chad tonight. So I hope he hears that. I also want the, the commission to know that there was, it's just a night of technology glitches. So apparently, we had a glitch with access vision. So there was a, a brief moment in time that that stream stopped. So apologies there, but it is back and working. So thank you to Chad and to Glenn, who are working through some of those things. But Chad, do we have anyone in the queue for public comment?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll ask for it a couple more times. Are there any public comments, or is there anyone that's in the queue that would like to make a remark?
Mayor, I do see, I see John Kenevick's phone number, but John, are you able to push star six and unmute yourself, or are you not wanting to make comment?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, John, if you're.
Hello?
Chad, if you start the.
I want to make sure I'm getting through. Thank you. I'd like to thank the city commission and the people giving the information. I find it very interesting. There are some things that are, want to speak on. You're talking about culture and making things more available to citizens of Battle Creek. And then I remembered a place there, a thing that would happen every year called the Taste of Battle Creek, to bring people downtown. And that failed because the people that were actually having the vendors down there to make it the Taste of Battle Creek, were being charged by the government of Battle Creek, which was a disincentive. So eventually that stopped. Talking about the sustainability, I can also recall that the government of Battle Creek, through the taxpayers, purchased a nice fuel wood pellet furnace, and the cost savings every year was $25,000. The city government kept that money. So there was really no incentive whether you had an oil furnace or not, because the money was being kept by the government. You spent somewhere in the neighborhood of about $150,000 for going to computers many years ago. This would be a paperless situation, where they would be saving paper at the city hall. Estimated cost of that was about $25,000 a year. And of course, the citizens paid for those computers, but when they had to deal with cost savings on paper, the paper saved, the $25,000, the citizens of Battle Creek received nothing. So when you start talking about the sustainability of the government of Battle Creek, or what you call the sustainability of Battle Creek, that's basically every time you do something that's would have a cost savings or a cost benefit, you tend to keep that money and not distribute it back to the people that actually paid for that, which would be the citizens or, or the taxpayers of Battle Creek. Finally, just some questions. And that would be, how much money does, has been spent on the Kellogg Arena through tax dollars over the last year, or the many years that it's been operating? And has it ever showed any kind of financial stability? Same question that would have to do with full blast. Is that drawing taxpayer dollars, or is that self-sufficient? We know that the binder park golf course over many, many years is not sustaining itself either, and has been reinforced by all kinds of different games through the government of Battle Creek. So is this a reason for we should invest, and the government should invest our taxpayer dollars, whilst receiving no accountability or no reduction in our costs that make it more affordable, and would also tell us that the government of Battle Creek was really looking after our interest? And I was thinking about economics and electricity and utilities, which is one of your concepts. And what would happen if the government of Battle Creek put up a solar farm and would save?
All right, John, your time is up. John, it gives me great pleasure to say your time is up.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other individuals in the queue, Chad?
I see no, no other individuals in the queue.
All right. Any commission comments? If there are none, I'm just going to say thank you very much for being flexible tonight and participating. I think there was some great participation. I want to thank the Vice Mayor. The Vice Mayor was going to run the meeting, but she's had some problems with her internet connection up in the upper part of Michigan. So thank you very much. Unfortunately, we had three commissioners that were unable to be here tonight at the last minute. So there's a lot going on. And I want to thank all the city staff for tolerating a long meeting tonight. Thank you very much, Rebecca. We'll see everyone tomorrow. Let's, let's have a good night.